United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty as its supreme law.
Okay, do we have any announcements? Do we have any announcements that we don't have? Take that, I'll be quiet. Do we have any announcements that...
Don't, I don't.
We just left the guy here. Okay, so the public hearing. Have a motion to open the public hearing. And discuss the 30, the application for thirty-two West Main Street. We have a motion. Okay, great. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, and why don't we have the representative of... Mark, would you like to say, tell us a little bit to the public about the project?
Yeah.
And then your proposed tenant?
Yes, so we're...
He is anxious to his presentation, so let's do that.
I guess we did that last month, and we're here as a follow-up. Completed the mailing for the people in the area.
Okay, and did we give the receipts of that to...
Yes, this is this.
Give you a lot more information, just going to keep my phone there.
So that, just so the public knows.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those are the receipts for the certified mailings that are required to be sent to property owners within a certain radius of thirty-two West Main Street.
Correct, and I guess just to give you a highlight, there's one address, Dylan's. The post office has it listed as address the unknown. First press material, there's notice was left, but they didn't sign it yet. I guess they need to take it to the post office to get it. And then Frontier, their address is somewhere in Texas. And there's a delay and the post office says a nine eight, but still arriving late is the indication there.
So it's something like a dozen or something that you sent and...
There's three, right.
Or asked.
Right. You can have those.
Okay, thank you.
So I think that was one of my to-dos.
Yes.
And the other one is I got a questionnaire regarding an engineering report. I felt that out to the best of my ability. That wasn't very much for me, I mean, because there are no changes being done at the outside or things like that of the property. So I think that was, that was submitted and...
You submitted the short environmental assessment before you're talking about.
Environmental, yes.
Yes. And, okay.
I think that's, that's it.
Okay, and, okay. So the reason that we have to have the public hearing, right, is that the proposed tenant is looking to do a small micro event space. And under the current code of building to Washingtonville, that type of use requires a special exception, so hence we have the hearing. And so would you like to tell us, in the public, a little bit about what you're proposing?
Sure, love to. So first of all, good evening and thank you once again, members of the board, for giving us an opportunity to talk about this proposed venue. So my name is Mark Felix, I'm from Hart City, Noah Sager Felix. And so we're both co-founders and owners of Memorable Moments. So it's an event venue, and we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to obviously present this proposal for this business, and that we feel is going to bring social and economic benefits to the town and to the village. Now, as far as what exactly is Memorable Moments? Well, it's a micro event venue designed to serve the community with elegance, flexibility, and accessibility. So it's a boutique-style event space tailored for intimate social gatherings, so smaller social gatherings, meaning anniversary, retirement dinners, baby and bridal showers, funeral repass, or also small corporate meetings, perhaps art exhibits, fitness expos, and also community workshops that need a space that's indoors in order to function. So our target is to have no more than a hundred, hundred-and-ten individuals at the facility at any, for any given event. So this will ensure that it'll be a quiet and respectful atmosphere with minimal disruption to the surrounding neighborhoods.
I'm going to just stop you there on that point, Mark. Did you happen to get any information from the building inspector, Mark, or just the capacity of the space that she's projecting as?
No, but the previous, right, I believe there's eighty-some occupants. There, because there's a sign right in the bathroom with the hanging up. So took their occupancy there, and I think it was in the eighty range, eighty-some range. But I have not received any other update.
Okay, I think the email, I think, just became clear the other day that the building inspector is requesting a letter from us, which I thought we asked for that last month from her, but if she's looking for something formal, could you just...
It's a formal, formal request.
Yeah, let's make a request to the building inspector then to let us know what she has deemed the capacity to be, so that will help you and help us with the application. Okay.
And that would definitely be in alignment with what our target audience would be anyway, because we're trying to position ourselves where we're more of a venue that's smaller, but with a banquet hall feel, but for fifty-two, a hundred people, right in that range, right? So why? Why do we want to do this? Well, if you consider our industry trends, especially since the pandemic, it's evident that people want to get together more. They're kind of, they're pretty much tired of the Zoom slash Teams meetings where you're just kind of in front of a monitor all the time, and you miss that social connection, where you could actually shake someone's hand, or you could hug them, you know? So with regard to this venue, this will give us that opportunity to bring people together, to bring families together, actually to bring the community together as well. So we see that microspaces are becoming more and more popular, and they offer affordability, they offer flexibility compared to the traditional hotel conference rooms or banquet halls or golf courses that might exist in the area. So it's just, it's another option. Now, as far as trends, we know that globally, the micro event business is growing exponentially. In fact, by some projections, it's estimated that it could be a trillion-dollar business in the next ten years, which is actually extraordinary, but more and more people are moving towards that model to celebrate special moments, special events, instead of just having it at home. They want to maybe stretch out a little bit more, where they can actually have a place to enjoy that space and make it memorable. And that's where we came in. So that leads us to our community value and demand. So from our standpoint, our concept meets a growing demand for affordable local event spaces that are professionally managed and beautifully curated. So we've spoken with local residents, local businesses, just as a, you know, survey, just to kind of see what they would think about that idea of having such a micro event space. And it's clear that there are three things that came to mind. They mentioned that they want to have popular rental package options, they want to have aesthetically pleasing modern designs, and also they want to have an accessible location in order to celebrate these moments. Also, to have the flexibility to have no food preparation on site, so that that way they can appeal to those who have perhaps a unique palate with regards to dietary restrictions. It gives them that flexibility, so that if they want to bring their own foods, including specialty foods, they can do that. And, as we mentioned later on, it's going to open up a possibility also to involve the community more, where we'll have a vendor list, or we could feature local establishments for food for catering, so that that way, if individuals come from outside of the area, we could refer them to those businesses that are local. So what are we requesting? As mentioned, we're requesting approval for a special permit to operate under this exception use permit. And why this particular location? Well, this location basically has adequate parking, there's no residential units that are directly above or attached to this particular property, it has easy access to public roads, and also compliance with fire, safety, and occupancy limits. It basically checked all those boxes, plus the building itself, I believe, was built in two thousand and twenty-two, which is really recent. So from that standpoint, we're sure that it's up to code as well. So we're also willing to work with any required zoning agencies to verify and ensure that it meets all local safety codes and zoning standards. So with regards to traffic noise, or traffic or noise, that might be a concern that some people might have when they think about venues. They might think that, you know, there's going to be a lot of people, and what comes to mind might be that, what could happen, but we have ways to mitigate against those potential situations. Well, daytime or limited event hours that don't run past eleven P M. We'll have strict event booking policies to prevent overcrowding. We'll also have real-time security cameras to manage compliance and also ensure that we have event coordinators that are available to be on-site if necessary, and also post, pre and post-clean-up and trash disposal plan that will be supported by SOPs or standard operating procedures that we'll have in place, not only for our staff, but also for the clients that will be renting the... So as far as economic and community benefits, as we mentioned, Memorable Moments is a small business that will support other local vendors. What do we need? Well, event planners for one, florists, photographers, restaurants, and caterers. And as far as the space itself, will offer usage during the week also for not-for-profits, for community groups, that again, might need a space, perhaps after-school activity for, you know, if there's a dance troupe that might need a space for, you know, that where they can exercise or practice, that would be a possibility. So those are just some ideas that we had in mind. So we're committed to being good neighbors, and that's really important to us, because obviously in the community, you think that when we have strong families, strong families build strong communities, and we have strong communities, then we can accomplish much together, and we have that in mind. So we plan on being responsible stewards of our space. And our business will be designed to be low-impact and high-quality and community-oriented. So we welcome your guidance, and will happily comply with any terms needed to operate this business venue. So in conclusion?
Let me have back.
So we respectfully request your support in granting the necessary zoning or special use permits in order to make Memorable Moments a reality. And we believe that this will be a positive addition to Washingtonville, offering a beautiful safe welcoming space to celebrate life's most meaningful occasions and to make them memorable. So we thank you for your time and consideration, and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Do you have any questions? I have two questions. If you want to, we might have mentioned this the last time, but I forgot in the next. Is this for during the week or on the weekend or any type?
Primarily, our target window would be for weekends, or Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. However, if there are events that happen during the week, we can accommodate that. So we'll be willing to work with the community members or clients in order to make better that.
And my second question was, are you committing bands or music of any kind? You know what I mean, not the type of music.
Right.
But I mean, are you doing digitalized music, CD player? I don't know, I'm not an AI person by any stretch of the word, but you know what I'm saying.
No worries.
You're saying live music? Live music.
Live music. Well, I mean, honestly, our original thought was to have, like, for example, a disc doc or DJ music, so that that way they could bring their own speakers if they need to. But again, keeping them within a confined, um, lines that are in place.
Of course, any musicians coming would also be counted toward your...
Number.
Your...
Correct. But if someone wants to bring in a couple of violins, or, you know, if a family wants to, you know, bring in drums and they have a band, you know, we could definitely accommodate that, but we would take it on a case-by-case basis.
Does the space you have accommodate that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot...
I haven't seen the...
Yeah, it's about eighteen hundred square feet, I believe.
Yes.
So from that standpoint, it's definitely large enough to have that, and, but again, it also depends on the size of party or event, I should say, that, that's the hell. If you have forty people or fifty people with a band, that's fine, but if you have an event that has perhaps eighty people, it might be a little bit tight, but if someone wants to bring a piccolo, that's fine as well. Or harmonica.
Any questions from anybody else?
I like what I hear.
No?
Just about the parking, it's parked a bit across the street, it's busy.
Right, so the parking, I think, was the biggest question we had, was in terms of capacity and the, I think the code is one parking space for two guests, I think?
Yeah.
I don't think, just going on your eighty number, I don't think there's a hundred-and-sixty spaces there. There was a prior variance given in June of two thousand and one, which allowed for to work into the calculation, the twenty spaces across the street. Albeit, that was a different zoning code at the time, and it was a different tenant at the time, but... So that was something that was... Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I just go in there. I mean, prior, there was Hudson Valley Playtime, and although it may not have been zoned for that, they did go a number of birthday parties, picnics, hollering parties, you know, with Wichita Bill and all the other events that the village did, and there weren't really any issues, or I didn't know of any issues at that point. I don't know if that makes difference or not, but it kind of has been done before in my mind, but without...
That's good to know.
Any, no issues. And like, especially, we had, we closed that too, the pharmacy closes that too, were closed on Sundays.
Right, so even though there's two other tenants there...
Right.
The structure of those, the operations of those tenants aren't necessarily going to overlap with post-operation here.
Correct, and even brands at Orange County Bagel closes that to a degree, you know, daily, so.
Excuse me, how many spaces are we talking about in municipal?
I think there's twenty in municipal lots.
I think I counted twenty-seven at the location.
Twenty-seven? Yeah, the variance from two thousand and one allowed, the brand, you know, variance of, yeah, twenty spaces.
Well, that is similar in the neighborhood of fifty-ish, fifty spaces or so. And the variance was for, I mean, twenty spaces in that lot.
Otherwise, approval of the variance to allow also the parking calculation, the five hundred feet of municipal space, allow its branding of variance of twenty spaces. So basically, that they could calculate using the existing spaces and some spaces from across the street.
Okay, so the reason I ask that is, if the capacity is eighty, you're not going to have eighty cars yet. You're going to have twenty cars, thirty cars.
Right, and that's why, that's why the formula is capacity eighty, but forty, forty spaces. Yeah. So... So, but a favor, but a concern, we could put into a resolution as part of it to recognize, similar to what they did several years ago, incorporating that there is accessible municipal space across the street. Okay.
We were just counting up ours.
Oh, okay.
There's thirty-three in our lot across and across the street.
We encourage walkers also, because it's walking distance, so someone wants to ride a bike, that's fine as well.
Okay. So on particular weekends, is there access to the middle school parking lot, or they're not allowed to use that?
Officially or unofficially, I'm not sure. In my mind, the school is a public place that we all own. Necessarily operationally, I don't feel that, but... So that's an interesting point to bring out, that that is literally a walking distance as well.
Just one other question. Typically, there's, sometimes there's a couple of matches, so I'm not a walking...
Oh, in the municipal lot, yes. Yeah, they're generally in the morning.
Right. Is that, is that a British contract?
And the food trucks, too, I was thinking about, that are operating there from time to time.
I don't know how that's allocated, huh?
Yeah. For the charity car washes, since the mayor's here, do you run to China?
Charity for the car washes?
How that works? They're generally, my recollection is that they're generally in the morning, which doesn't sound like primary use is going to be in the morning, so...
Yeah, they're generally in the morning, sometimes here, and sometimes they're like a lot, because of the exposure and all that good stuff.
Yes.
But it's normally, you know, eight in the morning to maybe twelve, one o'clock kind of thing.
Because they're generally close to being over, almost overwhelmed when I get there.
Yeah.
So, and, yeah.
And generally, there's maybe two or three a year. That type of thing.
Do they still use that lot? Because I haven't, I don't think I've seen one in a...
It was, I think the swim club did something during the summer.
Did they?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like it's going to be a huge conflict.
Yeah, it's not busy, busy kind of thing, no.
There is another municipal parking lot right around the corner, it's called Street Parking, that, you know, available on the street.
Yes, there was street parking in the town, so... Okay. Aside from the, getting the information from the building inspector, which obviously goes into the formula, do we have any other questions? And I don't hear anything else from other members of the public.
The one thing is, I mentioned last time, we designated smoking area. I didn't see them over there.
They would make one, there's an area in the back of the parking lot, there's a lot of don't search, which I, there is an area off the, away from the...
And you had mentioned also last time, they were planning on letting, and if your customers have alcohol...
We would discourage it.
We would discourage it. It doesn't sound like what you're targeting is having like all-night venue of, of, um, these celebrations. Um, Katie, was there anything else that we needed to address that you're...
I think those are the two big ones, the parking...
Okay.
And the building inspector.
Okay, so we could make motion to close the public hearing, have a contingency of getting that information from the building inspector to get to that final number, but we don't necessarily have to carry this over. If we do want to consider, we got a moving, we should close the public hearing first and then consider the resolution to that with the public hearing. Right?
If you want, I think the resolution needs work, and you might want to wait until you get the building inspector input before through the meeting, but you can close the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, will we move it or will... Okay. Okay. On favor? Anonymous? Okay. Could we make a motion to approve the special use permit? What would you suggest? Approve the special use permit on the contingency, give the final number from the building inspector?
Sure, and then you can...
Yeah, because then they can move forward.
Right, right.
With the... Um, I have to, um... I'm sorry. Approve the special use, approve the special use permit, I think there was something...
On the condition that it complies with the...
On the condition that the contingency goes, from the building inspector, as to the occupancy and setting. Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Anonymous, okay. Okay, so we'll get that, we'll get that internally addressed, we'll get the information back to you, then we'll get the resolution formalized into, as a, um, okay. Oh? Yes, question?
Will there be a need to come back, or will Mark be notified?
Yes, will be notified, um...
That's right.
Yeah, check in with the village office and the building, the building inspector will be doing what she does, you know, to give the information.
Just, I know, looked up to the building inspector, but do you think there would be at least, the September occupancy, was there a question?
I can't speak for the building inspector, so she would have to address that, yes.
Okay. Yeah, just curious.
Yeah, but you're not, I mean, you're not changing the size of the space, or doors or windows or things, so, but it's only been empty a short time, a year?
Not, well, from, well, since, ended June, July and August.
They left July, August this year?
Well, they left, ended June.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sounds long.
But before we move forward, we should wait to hear.
Right, right. Okay. Any other matters to do now? Um, I think, yes, you didn't say anything? No, okay, anything? Um, no, okay. Um, okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna go second. Let go, second, aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.